I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Tomood.
By Mr. Lawrence.
I'll say.
By Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? That's a five oh vote for the clerk. If the clerk would note that Mr. Glavin's not present and Ms. Newman's not present. All right, if the clerk would read the revisions, please, to the agenda.
To the consent agenda, we're adding five Q resolution admitting petty cash and change funds, adding five R resolution admitting the budget to recognize additional funds for the Keesler Federal Stadium Capital Maintenance Restricted Fund, adding five S resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding with Biloxi Public School District for use of school buses, adding five T resolution authorizing reduction of rental facility fees for the Biloxi Public School District, and to the routine agenda, we're adding a docket in the amount of eighty-one thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Tomood.
By Mr. Lawrence and a second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? It's a five oh vote for the clerk. All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We do have three longevity awards, and I'd like to present a couple of ten years and one forty years.
Okay.
Time passes when you're having fun. Public Works, Shane Bell, for ten years of service to the Public Works, would you please come up? And from the Fire Department, William Coffel. William? Ten years. Thank you, man. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And for forty years, Sherri Bell. What's Sherri? Hiding back in the corner. Can't believe it. Congratulations, Sherri. You want to say something? Good deal. Thank y'all.
She been here as long as Joe was.
And let me, again, it's Mardi Gras time, and a lot of activities taking place in Biloxi, and a couple of things, February is Black History Month, we have an African-American program.
Yes, sir.
We have no departmental reports. We'll start with council reports. Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I was bringing something back up that we discussed last week, Jerry and I. So I went to the LDO and picked up all these rules and regulations, printed them out and passed them off to everybody. And the first one was the boat storage. I mean, this thing is not permitted in any way they put it in here. But I can tell you, we can't break our own ordinances, and Jerry is the Community Development Director, he's the one that's supposed to make sure we follow all the rules and regulations that's in the book. You can't take a zone and put it on top of another zone, you can't eliminate it. So when you put that PDI on top of the waterfront, you can't have any storages there at all. And it says it over and over there. And that's why I printed all this out, all the rules, all the regulations that come from the LDO itself. I wanted to make sure you all thought paying attention to the rules and regulations that we have, and that we're supposed to be honoring those as the LDO, and I mean, that's your job, Mayor, Jerry, Peter, all of us need to pay attention. We took a note to protect these laws and regulations. So when you do this with one set of rules that does not fit anything in the city at all, now, if y'all want to change the rules and stuff like that, we have the power to do that. I've been telling you all that forever. But you can't go putting this stuff in action, but totally against the LDO in the city of Biloxi. That's the first one. The second one is the variance on that five acre planned development, nobody can change that. That planned development is five acres. How it got to one and a half acre, I have no clue. Same thing with that. The rules and regulations clearly states only a variance, which is not a variance, it's the definition, the word variance can be given by the city council in the chart we passed on. So that's another one that's actually done wrong, and we need to go back and correct them, I have no problem with that. But I mean, these are stuff that's in the LDO that we state that we're going to, we keep in place. And Jerry, Jerry has a problem. He's the Community Development Director, but he's also Economic Development. So in one sense, he's pushing these things, because that's his job on one side, but the first job for him is that he's got to protect the LDO and the laws of the city. And that's, that's the two hats he wears, so. And my thing is sometime when it comes to here, we hear more about the economic part of it than actually the rules and regulations we should be following as a city council and voting these in. And if Peter needs to get to learn the book and read it, we have to give it to Peter too. Whatever, somebody, you're supposed to be protecting us as an attorney to make sure we're doing the right thing. Not saying we voted on it once before, that makes it good, no, that don't make it right. All I'm trying to say, a lot of these people are going to be here next time again, follow the rules of the LDO, pay attention to it. If it's not right, you don't want it. We can't do this in the real estate business and just try, we doing that for real estate to somebody to help sell their property. That's not our problem. So we need to follow LDO. The storage units are totally, that's probably the worst, but the variance from the five acre PDA, it's five acre PDA, and nobody but the city council can even talk about that, not an adjustment board, they don't have the authority. I know Jerry said they do, but they don't. That's the definition of the words and the variance and everything, there's small little setbacks in that, is all that board can do. They can't take a five acre land and cut seventy percent of it off and say, yeah, you could build on it. No, they can't do that. So those are the different laws that I just want us to pay attention to. Now, I know David asks, are we breaking the law? Well, we're not following the law. I don't exactly what you want to call it, but we need to be more sturdy, so we need to, we took a note to protect all this, and we just need to do it the right way. If you have to be adjusted or changed, that's up to us. We have the power to do that. But that's why I told Jerry I didn't agree with him last time, so that's why I went through that and copied all the stuff. All the rules and regulations come out of our LDO, which is pretty much the state law too, so you're doing two things here. You're the ordinance of the city of Biloxi and also doing the state law. So and that's our responsibility as council, when we vote, to make sure we vote in the right way, or everything in Montola is the right way. And that's, Jerry, you know, Jerry should know the book, he can explain a lot of stuff to us, and my first thing I want Jerry to do with these new things that come up, explain the laws of the LDO. And then, if you want to push the economic side, then we can also do that. But the first, there's two or three things we've done lately, and another one I got near is the guest cottage. A guest cottage has to be set up with a home, it's accessory to the home, it's connected to the home. The power and everything from, and that too, a guest cottage. We have no explanation about building cottages by themselves. Yes, they want to do that, change that, that's up to us. But the rules state, we have, the other one we have, and I don't know what we're going to do with that one, Jerry, is the tiny house. Okay, we need to describe, put this, we have no description of a tiny house in the LDO at all. Everybody keeps talking about that, there's no such thing in our LDO. And the cottages, the guest cottages, is part of the main house, period. So I just want to put that out on the table, make sure everybody understands it, that we got to follow the laws ourselves and keep them straight, and we want to change any of them, we could do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Guines.
Yes, I want to echo first what the mayor said, Black History Program, Frank Gruich Community Center, they had a movie out, the Six Triple Eight, one of the descendants are going to be speaking regarding that movie, that postal workers that did a great job during World War II. So that's going to be exciting program at the Frank Gruich Community Center at six o'clock this evening. I wanted to bring attention to this letter I received in the mail today, and I found out later on that the mayor have a meeting with the community group, the Catholic, it was addressed toward the Catholic Diocese of the Mercy Cross area, Back Bay Mission and of course, the city of Biloxi regarding some of the people that are out there in the tents, in the back area, some of the walking through the properties and things like that. And it has picked up a little bit, so I believe the mayor is going to meet with them tomorrow and try to address this, but I wanted to note that we were looking at it, we're on top of it. They also mentioned a couple of things about making sure everyone follow the rules and ordinances of the city. And I told them I would just footstone the letter that they sent to me today, so just wanted to make note of that. The other thing I have is OMS, Our Mother's Sorrow, had some issues, and this for the mayor, CAO, and of course, Public Works, speeding and the OMS traffic of the church coming down Division Street. We had some issues with the speeding down there, and some of the older people who are going to worship service on Sundays and on Saturdays, two of the people almost got hit. And so they wanted to ensure that we can do something about it. I know when we did the infrastructure project, we took away their parking bays for the elderly. They used to have like two or three handicapped parking bays right there in front of the church, and we took them away. And when some of the elderly parked there, now, you know, some of the officers were asking them to move, and of course, you know, when elderly are handicapped, they're used to doing what they do every Sunday, if they would just kind of ease up on them doing worship service there. So I let them know that I was going to address it, see if we can find some solutions to their issues, maybe some more cautionary signs, and especially during worship hours. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guines, Mr. McGilvery.
Just one item, Mayor, just a shout out to Public Works. Greg Ross has done outstanding job on assisting getting all those cell towers down at the Margaret Sherry complex. Matter of fact, they're all gone now. You just have to get the cell companies to go back and put that property back the way it were, were before they installed them, and I've been assured they're going to do just that. Might take a week or two, but it'll be corrected. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery, Mr. Shoemaker.
Just a few things. The last, I don't know, couple of weeks, I've been inundated with calls regarding ditches, culverts, and drainage since Saturday. I had five Saturday alone, starting at 5:00 AM, 5:30 AM, and it hasn't slowed down. I figured, you know, after the rain, I'd get some, because I always do, but I had multiple, multiple calls, messages, and texts prior to that. So at some point, I don't, we're going to have to, I guess, hopefully, address some issues. Some of them are very simple, some are not simple, but I've gotten inundated, and I was going to get, reach out to Director Allen later in any way and just let him know, and I haven't yet, but I will at some point today. But hopefully, I know we've got some temp workers cutting grass, I don't know if we can use any of them for public or for drainage, but if so, I've spoken with the county also, and I think they're on board to help us out with several projects as well. Homeless, I don't want to beat a dead horse, because I know I bring it up quite often, but it's still an issue, it's, we still have to address that. When I got off of I-110 coming here to the meeting today, there was five homeless on one side and one on the other side. And again, not only that it's the residents, it's the visitors, the tourists that are coming here, and I understand these people don't have anywhere to go, and I said it a million times, I don't have the answer, but it's just not a good look when people get off the interstate or get into Biloxi, and that's what they see. I was at a restaurant the other night, in line waiting to eat, we had to wait, and there were some tourists there, I have no idea who they were, they didn't know who I was, and a lady was telling the group of people she was eating with, she was waiting as well, talking about the homeless people on the beach when they were getting to the restaurant, walking to the restaurant. So it is an issue, and at some point, again, we're going to have to do something, and I don't know what that is, but I feel like we're just doing a disservice to the residents, the visitors, and to the city, because you hear it so much. I had a business owner contact me a couple of days ago, and he has a business on Howard Avenue, and he said almost every morning he goes to work, and he gets there, you know, 7:00, 7:30 in the morning. He said there's two or three behind his building sleeping that he has to run off. And again, we can't put it on the police, it's not, it's, we're making it a police issue, it's really not a police issue. They're doing whatever they can to arrest them and move them along, but at the end of the day, it's not their issue. I mean, they're, they're taking the fall for everything, but it's absolutely, there's more issues, I mean, more resolutions that we need to come up with. And again, I'll say it again, that we, I think, as the coast, as a community, as the city, business leaders, business owners, everybody, it may take everybody coming together to do something, but the longer we wait, just the worse it's going to get, and summer's coming. And I just think we need to do something now versus later, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Mr. Mayor, any update on the IP Casino, that rock parking lot, getting that landscaped?
Yeah, I think, again, there's assembling the conference that we put sixty-five or something, it's going up right now. The air show is in November, so as soon as this show gets done, I think that they'll proceed with the investment that we had talked about with Vincent, as far as doing the landscaping around the perimeter and the addition of, I think, a hundred parking places.
Yes.
Hey, closer to the casino. Could be after this home show, though, the Southeastern Manufacturing Home Show that's coming up, and, you know, been here the last three years, been a fourth year for that. It'll happen after that show.
Yeah, and he's getting ready to go ahead and start putting the shrubbery up around there to, for visibility's sake. I saw him this past weekend, and we talked a little bit about it, him go ahead and getting cranked up with the shrubbery to help control the dust.
Outstanding, I'm glad to hear that, thank you. And you mentioned the air show, when is the air show this year roughly?
From April.
November.
It's actually in November, because it's under birth.
Okay. Also, I want to wish everybody a happy Mardi Gras, please be safe out there.
Hey, Paul.
Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
I thought Dixie would be, do y'all have an update on Broadwater property? Mike, what they've been doing, how much more they've been cutting? I know she'd like to have that, and I thought she'd come in, but we check about that every week, so.
Hopefully, in the past week, I wish it's happened out there, I'm not sure God was willing, and I'm not sure if he's there or what. Checking on that today, because it's clear it's a lot of them today. But he had made a promise to us that, having he finished what he's doing right now, to move over all areas of cities. For, by the way, by the trash lot. That hasn't, that hasn't happened. I can think of cities, for the will. I said. We also don't need. First thing. All the, I don't know, United, they don't care. I think. It was up, it's up there. I'm done. I can see. I have that over. We're probably. I'm not a couple of them here. I'm saying. I'm there, so. I'm over there, so. I'm on. That's the end right now. Right. I'll get it. I'm. I know.
So we don't know if they have more people or less people on the property right now, you looking at that?
Chief, Chief, I'm not sure if I picked up on it, but the Elliot Homes property, which was the old school property.
So the Elliot.
They're executing a, it's past letter.
That's what we're waiting for, we've been waiting for about a week to get that letter from them. We don't have it yet, I'm not real sure why, because I mean, I think they want to work with us on it. I guess sometimes things just take time, but we'll get that letter hopefully, and then we'll be able to move into that property also, and anybody that's there, we'll be able to move them out also.
Do they have any tents or anything where they live at?
Yeah, there's some tents, yeah, absolutely, there's some tents in there, yeah.
Okay.
And it's, it's difficult sometimes to determine if there's somebody actually in that tent or not, because, you know, we moved so many on that a lot of them just left everything and moved on. So some of them are abandoned, I'm sure there's probably some new ones in that area, since, you know, we can't go in there and run anybody off without the letter.
Have you talked to, I mean, when they, they bought that property, didn't they, to develop it?
Yeah, they get a no trespass, and they're in process of doing that now. Let me, echoing what Councilman Shoemaker was saying too, it's, you can see it every day, the new folks arriving, they're dragging things, new backpacks, and so they're coming every day, just like the tide, comes in and out, and it's kind of difficult, is, you know, it's a solution is difficult. We don't know what the solution is, but they're new players every day, and I think Dana Whitman had, they've been in the process of doing another census, I think, and it's going to be dynamic, it's moving from one place to the other, moving west, as you said, down the railroad tracks, and a couple of properties adjoining, you know, around Dubes, but it's a, it's a moving target, and it's hard to.
It is.
Put your finger on it.
It is.
I received a letter from the bishop, and he put it right up with them, down with the seventy, eighty people, how many they moved that, how many they sent back home.
They had eleven.
That was a pretty, that was a good letter.
Yeah, well, over a hundred, over a hundred folks that were camped in tents when this whole process and daycare center established, and I think they've relocated seventy since that time, but they're not, you know, it never was intended to be overnight stay situation, they were going to clear what they, they did. And, you know, again, it's a dynamic mode that they try to address, but.
Yeah, I was, I was through there yesterday, and there was probably maybe eight, ten tents that were left in there.
I know, they moved a lot of people, they did a good job. You know, they got, they got to give the job, and you have to leave, and that's pretty much, that's a good thing.
Well, you know, again, there's some movement up and down Division Street, down Crusader, and some people who are unhappy with, you know, the folks drifting there to and fro, not so much overnight, but that's a problem, you know, it's a problem for being a homeowner, if I was there and the people crossing your property doing things that you might perceive not good, well, not good, and even around Division Street and Commerce Street, but you can't hide from the, from the problem.
Councilman, Lowes and Fishes, which is, they're situated at Mercy Cross property, they're doing the feeding, and they're, they're feeding somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy people every day, four days a week. And the other big feeding opportunity is Fatima, Arlyea Fatima Church, they're also feeding about fifty or so people a day. In addition to.
Is the Methodist Church on Division still feed? Right there, it used to be in Si, Simon's place.
Yeah, they still.
They still feeding too?
Yeah. Be sure, yeah.
Does any of them feed every day, or they feed certain days?
I don't know what.
I'm not sure what Seacrow does.
It's not every day.
No, not there.
Not every day.
Like Lowes and Fishes might do Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
Yeah, I think they try to coordinate that, right.
Anyway, the biggest problem is just paying attention, like you said, staying on top of it, because they, they get into neighborhoods, and you just don't feel safe at your home, you know, these people walking past the property, and you don't know what they're all, are they good people, bad people, not saying they're all bad people, but I got to have one or two, that's not good, that's not good for you, chief, you know that better than anybody, and it's hard to deal with them. Some of them, some are a little, they're a little crazy, you know? You don't take them, they forget to take their lithium, they in trouble, you know? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All right, that brings us to the public agenda. We'll set aside up to forty-five minutes for citizens' comments. If anyone wishes to address the council, you'll be permitted three minutes. When your three minutes are up, you'll hear this sound. Such a delight. And when you come to the table here, you'll need to pull the mic close so people can hear you and the world can hear you. Be sure to sign in on the sign in sheet and state your name clearly, so the council clerk can record your name accurately. Is anybody on my left, your right? Ms. Campen.
My name is Natalie Campen, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the mayor and the council again this week. I'm the managing editor of WLOX News. With me today is our news director, Renee Johnson. Each of you received a letter from Renee on Friday addressing the proposed changes to the public records ordinance. First, I want to thank you for addressing some of the concerns raised last week. The amended ordinance on the council agenda today now makes it clear that records should be produced within fourteen working days of the request, as stated by the Mississippi Public Records Act. We still have a few concerns about the proposed language changes that could create some confusion and some delays in processing public records. After I spoke here last week, Councilman Lawrence raised a question about why WLOX had concerns about this ordinance. To answer that, it's really not our concern, it's concern for everyone. We've had a great working relationship with the city of Biloxi over the years. We've always received timely and complete responses to our requests, and we're really grateful that how the city has worked with us over the years. I've been at the station thirty-five years, so we haven't had, haven't had a problem. We do know that Mr. Abide asked, explained last week that some of the changes were simply to clean up some language, not really to modify the obligations of the city under the public records requests. We just want to make sure that anything that you add to your ordinance doesn't conflict or confuse city employees who might be responding to these requests. Our outlines, our letter outlined several points of the draft ordinance that still have some concerns, such as the open-ended language about delaying records for consultation with an attorney. I hope that each of you have read the letter, and I would hope that it could be entered into the record with our objections. I don't want to read the whole thing here, because it definitely would take longer than the three minutes. To be honest, we just want to understand why the changes are necessary, if there are sometimes people that make requests that are too huge. I think the law states to send back and ask for a narrowing of these requests. We're not trying to ask for a burden on the city or city employees. We just want to make sure that records are not delayed or denied, and that citizens get an explanation, a detailed explanation about why records might be, take longer to produce, and we want to make sure that nothing limits citizens' access to public records. Biloxi does a great job of putting a lot of information online, which is very helpful, your agendas, your agenda packets and information, other records are available too, so that's helpful. You've always been responsive, we just really request that you take a look at our concerns and maybe back off a few more of these things. I just don't know why anything needs to be changed, other than y'all needing to update perhaps your fee structure. Again, we do appreciate how well the city of Biloxi works, this is not a WLOX issue, it's really an issue for everyone, and we just don't want to see changes made that could be mistaken or delay records in the future. Thanks so much for your help.
Thank you, Ms. Campen. Is there anybody on my right, your left, that wishes to address the council? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Ross Siemens.
My name is Tina Ross Siemens, and I'm the executive director of the Biloxi Bay Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today just to give you a little update on who we are and what we do. I'll start with our mission statement, to encourage, promote, and enhance the economic posture, environment, and cultural heritage of the Biloxi Bay Area. I want to thank you for your partnership, City Biloxi Council, and everyone I deal with who works for the city of Biloxi, and that's a lot of people, and I appreciate every one of them. By working together, we can accomplish our mission. Last year, we hosted approximately seventy events for our members and the community. Those events included ribbon cuttings. Those events included ribbon cuttings, participation in the Preserve Biloxi Committee, as well as supporting our city and the businesses and organizations who support us. A bonus, it's my pleasure to interact with visitors who stop in the Biloxi Visitor Center to learn more about my hometown. And I always joke with them, I like to tell people where to go, but in a nice way, and they always chuckle at that. And a lot of those visitors are really talking about retiring here, so we're doing a really good job with our hospitality. And I just want to say I'm proud to be Biloxian.
Thank you, Ms. Ross Siemens. Is there anybody else on my left, your right? Mr. Silvestro.
Hi. I wanted to bring up two things. Number one, reference to the homeless. Obviously, I've been doing this for whatever, but everybody makes it look like a homeless person is this poor innocent. There is so many. We're talking about dirtbags that are by me committing crimes that the city constantly goes in, they sneak back around and go back. The homeless people don't want them around them. The police officers are fed up with them. The mayor and the city are putting in a huge effort to try and do things. I plead with you. Make me part of the issue for free. We can move forward and we can make this situation better. You can't wait for landowners or whatever it is. It's like 810 of the same people. And their job is to keep the people who try and step up down. They're abusing them. They're on bicycles. They got backpacks. You know who they are. And that's their game. They go to Lady of Fatima Church that goes out of their way to feed them. They sit there, they cause trouble, they throw stuff all over. The poor church is trying to do the best they can, but they make it hard for everyone else. I watch people with jobs come up there, bring their kids food, go out of there, bring it home, do the right thing. And those people are coming to me and going, are they going to stop feeding us? So maybe, I don't know what the answer is, build more jails. But one thing about these people, they don't want to go to prison. It's not the policeman's job. Anyway, with that said. Dixie brought up an issue last week and I started doing some investigating. And it is true that when a dog, who's a police officer, retires, all the expenses are on that policeman. Now, I don't know if a dog retires, you would want to take that dog in. But there's ways to do things and I think together we can work and we can help the officer with the expenses for the year or two that the dog lives. Because the minute the dog retires, the officers take it in their heart to bring it home and they pay all the expenses for that dog. So I think maybe, you know, other states have it. They draw off like $800 a year. It helps pay. I went to some vets. They're willing to do the bills for him. The problem is that the policeman brought it to a vet here in its car. And now the dog retires, the policeman uses a vet that's by him. So together, and some of the officers brought up that you had lost an officer here who was a big dog lover. So I'm willing to donate my time to kind of help, you know? We have a lot of things people argue with, but I think this is something we can all get together and help the officers. Plus, some of them mentioned that they don't really have a place to bury the dogs. So together, maybe we can help the dogs.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestro. Anybody on my right, your left, that wishes to address the council? Anybody on my, anybody else on my left, your right? And last call, anybody in the room wish to address the council? All right, citizens' comments are closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read item 4A, please.
Ordinance to amend the code of ordinances pertaining to public records and Mississippi uniform crash reports.
Welcome, Kenny. All right, the motion was by Mr. Glavine and a second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Glavine?
Yep. We've kind of had some dialogue with council, but if you want to, I know we've made a few changes to the verbiage.
Yeah, I went ahead. Since last week, we, we added back in or didn't, basically und deleted what was the last sentence of section 293. And I received the comments from WLOX, talked with Natalie before the meeting. And I still believe that the first article we have, before we talk anything about our fee structure or our procedures, the first article is, we adopt the Public Records Act in all of its language. And if there's any dispute or somebody feels they're not being treated fairly, those remedies are still there. I appreciate her comments about what a good job the city does and it's, it's Katie Magmehan. That's basically some, some, some weeks, it's almost her full day's job. But we, she typically turns everything around within 48 hours, for the most part, seven days at the most. But on occasion, we get a very voluminous request and we need to explain, we still will write and respond within seven days while we'll need time. And within 14 days at least, we'll give them the estimate. If the request may take a week or two to produce, we're not going to, there's ethics opinions case law that says, we're not required to take somebody off their normal job, because she also produces this docket every week. We're not going to take her off her job just to work through and produce records. But we give them a timetable. It may take us a month to produce this. And a lot of times, she will just do it and then bill the person later. And generally, they, for the most part, they pay. Sometimes they don't pay. So we want to make it clear, and that's allowed under the law. The law says you're supposed to collect the money first. But if it's just a very small record and a small charge, we want to have the discretion just to go ahead and produce the record first. So that's one thing we're doing to make things even more accessible to the public. If something can't be produced, if it's attorney-client privileged, if it's a payroll record that might be privileged under the statute, we say that as part of our explanation of why it can't be produced. I think that one of their other comments was, it could take longer than 14 days. That's always been in the statute anyway, this last sentence that we added back in. If we need additional time, we will send that letter. We'll send it within 14 days. And so rather than trying to rewrite the whole thing, we mainly just cleaned up that second sentence. We also wanted to clean up, clean up our fee structure, which had a $5 an hour charge for her to produce things. And the statute says, it's what the lowest employee that could do that work. You charge that hourly rate. For the most part, her charges are never more than $30 or $40. If it's just a simple record, a lot of times there's no charge. If it's just, I need a, I need a resolution or contract off the agenda. She just sends them the link and there's no charge. So I appreciate their comments. Didn't have a problem with much of the letter, other than they tried to compare us to WLBT in, in the city of Jackson. I didn't, we didn't appreciate that. But with the rest of it, I don't think there's anything here that's going to affect people getting public records.
Thank you, counselor. I just want to add a couple of things. I was copying on the letter sent to the mayor by the news director, Ms. Johnson, read through it. One sentence kind of struck me, and I'll quote it, "While we take Mr. Abide at his word that the city is not seeking to modify its obligations under the law, we believe the city's proposed ordinance will create some risk and confusion." Maybe so. Anytime there is a change and they're interpreting what is in that change, that, that could certainly happen. I'm not aware of any big issues of people ever requesting information that it was so big that it created an issue. Certainly, there could have been some, but I'm not aware of many. And I do agree with council that the existing statute does provide a remedy. But in the, in the course of business, of course, it could take over 14 days, depending on the volume of records being requested and the, and the depth or scope. And if, if it ever became a problem, I, I think this council would do its responsibility and make additional changes if all of a sudden we found it was hard for people to have access to public records. That goes at the very core of transparency on what we do and how we do things. And we should make every effort to preserve that. So I understand the news media and others maybe reacting the way they did. But this city, this council, this administration and past administrations have cooperated with our news media and other private citizens when they're, they have requested records, to my knowledge. And that's all I have to say on that, that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Guines?
I think it was well explained. Peter laid it out, so I have no issues with it.
All right, any comments from the council? Mr. Lawrence?
My biggest problem, I don't see the, see the need for the change at all. We never had a problem. Where'd the problem come from? There never been a problem with us doing this. So I don't see what, why, why it was even brought up to change anything. We found by the state law, we're doing anything correct. Never had a problem. So I don't understand why these, this is even brought up at all.
First of all, it doesn't follow state law when it talks about what the charge can be to produce the records. The state law says you can charge what the lowest hourly rate is. And our ordinance says you charge $5 an hour and then so much research and all these little add-on charges. I don't think it's ever been, ever been touched or changed. And so.
But you're not changing that?
I'm changing, that's on the, yeah, we're changing.
Where did you go on from $5 or what?
That's on the 296 change. I don't know if that, did that not print out? It's on the agenda.
No. So what are you going from the $5 to what?
If I understand what council is saying, we're in line with what the statute says we can charge versus what our ordinance says we can charge. Is that in it in a nutshell?
The statute says you can charge no more than the lowest hourly rate for any person. You, you can certainly have an ordinance that says it's free or $5 an hour, which is not, which is not really recommended. There's nobody here in the city that can do any work for $5 an hour. I mean, so if the lowest possible person that can go through and do this is $20 an hour, then that's the charge to produce. It generally may take 20 minutes to 15 minutes, but that's the, that's the way the charge works instead of $5.
So this is all just a price increase, what you're trying to do?
I'm trying to correct the price to the time we're spending on this. Yes, ma'am.
It's just charge you another charge, that's all. Okay. I can't buy that one. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. McGilvray, anything?
I think Mr. Pete clarified, clarified the issue of, of the charge fee. That's what we want to change in this?
We're changing that and we're also modifying in section 293. We're, we're making a change to the next to last sentence and we're changing that to the sentence before that. It basically just, to me, it reads better to where you can understand there's a seven-day rule, but you have to still do it within 14 days unless there's an issue about the volume.
And we're also changing where it says shall, may several times.
Yeah, before we had to shall, give them an estimate and collect the money first. And that's just not practical if somebody wants a small document or, a lot of times people send something, they want it within 24 hours. And so to have to stop and collect it if it's a small amount. If it's a large, if it's a large production, we're going to generally give them that estimate first. So it gives them discretion about whether or not when and where to charge people.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. Schumaker, anything?
Some of the questions I had have been answered earlier. What's, we've been rolling along here. This was adopted by the state in 1983? Somewhere there about?
They did, and then they revised it all around 2011, 2012. They revamped it. They went from five days to seven days.
Okay. So what we have in place currently is, meets, meets the standard that the state set? Is that correct?
I guess it's not, it's not unauthorized to charge a much lower price than the state would allow you. I guess that.
Right, but does, but, but does our ordinance now comply with the state statute? Is it in line with the state statute?
I mean, as written, it's, it's not, it's not out of the ordinary, but if something could be written better. Like the statute doesn't say, the statute says you give a explanation of why you're not producing something. This says detailed written explanation. And we can get into an argument with somebody requesting of, your explanation's not detailed enough. So I'm trying to make this as close to the statute as possible.
But are we in compliance with the state statute now?
I think so, yes.
So if we're, and I think this goes back to Mr. Lawrence's question. If we're in compliance with the state statute now, why is there a need to change?
Well, I want to change the fee and that's, I think that's important. If somebody asking for a lot of records is charged the correct amount and doesn't get a break at the, at the expense of others. Also, the sentence I'm changing there, to me, it's a, it's not illegal, but it's a run-on, nonsensical sentence. And I'm trying to break it up into two sentences.
But that's the way it's written in the state statute? Is that correct?
No, this is our paraphrase of what the state statute was.
All right, so what we, what you're saying is the ordinance we have now is paraphrasing what the state requires?
I think that's right, yeah.
But we are in compliance with the state statute?
We are, because the first part of all this says, the state statute is adopted within this and everything in the state statute is part of this.
All right, when it comes to calculating what the cost is going to be for the production of records, surely it's a matter of who on our staff of 600 employees we have. Who's the one who's competent at the lowest hourly rate to provide these records? And whatever that is, plug that number in, right?
Right.
We can do that there. No ifs, ands or buts. Somebody requests the records, we already know what the rate is, right? So the other thing is, that I have questions about is the shall and the may. Mr. McGilvray referred to that. So may gives the city more latitude regarding what they shall be required to do now. Would that be accurate to say that? I mean, if I, if you shall do it, you're expected to do it. If you may do it, you might, you might not.
Correct, but that's only on the estimate, given an estimate.
Right. So if I request public records, what I'm supposed to do is contact somebody here, let them know what records I want. They're going to calculate what the cost will be. I will pay that cost and then they'll duplicate the records and, and get them to me, correct? And if there's, if there's any confusion about any payment, well, that's agreed in advance. Or if there's any question about the documents that are going to be produced in order to calculate the cost of that payment, that would be clarified before the duplication is begun. Would that be accurate? I would think that's, that's the way I view this as reading. And to, to make a long story short, I don't think what we have currently on the books needs to be changed. I prefer that we keep the language just as it is. It sounds like we need to calculate an hourly rate in there and that it's known to whoever's going to duplicate the records, what that hourly rate is. That's, that's all I have to say on the matter. Were there any other questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, you hit on a good point with the shall and may. That's a big difference. That's a big difference, and you shall do it or you may do it. That's, that's huge. That's a typical lawyer term, you know? When you're forced to do it, or you don't have to do it. Don't be smiling over that, Peter.
Easy, easy, easy. It's Mardi Gras.
That's, that's typical lawyer terms there. Shall and may, big.
Right, I, I don't prepare the estimate. That's what Katie does.
I, I have a question.
Sure, Mr. Gines.
Is anything you're proposing go outside of the state statute?
No, sir.
So, everything is within, and, and actually what we're doing is shoring it up so we can mimic what the state has? Is that, that's what, that's what I'm picking up?
That's right, yes, sir.
So, why wouldn't we adopt what the state has versus leaving it alone, or, if, if we leave it alone, then, then, then what?
I think the purpose of having some language in here is so if a citizen wants to try to find out what the procedure is, they can get the general sense of it here in, in the ordinance, rather than having to go look up and try to read the state statute. So, it's essentially kind of a summary of what the state statute allows, but if there's a disagreement over, "I didn't like your explanation," or "I don't think that's privileged," then we, we'd have to go to the state statute. I mean, the state statute lists pages of things that are exempt and are, are not to be produced. It doesn't do us any good to try to reprint all that in there, because it's already adopted in our ordinance.
So, if someone comes from another area, another jurisdiction, all they have to do is adhere to the state statute, and we're in compliance. We don't, we don't have to do a dog and pony show to actually, um, provide a service. We can just go by the state statute and leave it at that. Makes sense to me.
Well, different cities have different levels of explanations. Some, some cities just say, "We follow the act, and this is our fee." And some just say, they try to give more explanation to the, to the people looking it up. So, I didn't really change much of anything, other than getting rid of a, a bad sentence, trying to correct that. The time limits are untouched, uh, but the fee is, is basically archaic. I don't know where five dollars an hour came up with.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, I have one. We're in compliance with the state law right now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're not changing anything with the state law? We're not doing anything with the state law, basically? We still in compliance with the state law?
Our ordinance is in compliance with state law.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
All right, so, I'm gonna summarize what I understand. We, we're still not, we still have to produce the, the records within seven or fourteen days. We're required to do that unless there are extenuating circumstances, just a, as the state statute would allow.
That's right.
That's one. Two, and I think I have pretty good knowledge of this, there's other cities that are charging what it costs them to produce these records. So, as Mr. Tisdale, and I believe some of the colleagues on this council have said, sounds reasonable to at least make sure that we have that verbiage in there. If it costs us a dollar to produce a record, we should charge that dollar to produce that record. Right now, we're not doing that. We're, we're, it's costing us to provide these records to entities. And I may add, if somebody asks me, uh, for a copy of an ordinance, or a resolution, or some document that I have access to, and they're my constituent, I'm certainly gonna comply and give them whatever information I can as, as their representative free. I'm not gonna charge it. So, they, they have a, a resource to some degree of what we're able to, to access. The shall, and the, uh, may, and the must, and, and all that kind of stuff, I get it. I get it. That may be a tricky area, and, and, and that may be something, not necessarily intentionally, but maybe unintentionally, it creates a problem for those seeking, uh, certain information. So, I, I don't disagree with my colleague's point on that. But I, I do believe it's reasonable, uh, for us to look at this and at least charge what is, what is reasonable, and maybe clean up that language, 'cause that's all you're trying to do, is clean up that run-on sentence that's running on, and you're breaking it up in two to be, better comply with the state statute, and the language in the state statute. Am I accurate, or did I miss anything in my comments there?
I think that's accurate. The, the shall and the may, I'd have to double-check. That may be allowable in the statute to, to allow it to be an option, but it doesn't matter to me, whatever y'all wanna do with that.
All right. That's all I have, Mr. President.
One, one other question. If, if I called, who would I, who would I speak to in the city administration here at City Hall if I made a public records request?
Uh, Katie McManan is a public records officer.
And does, does Katie have a document, a guide, or a narrative, or something that she can copy and hand to somebody, or that she reads from to answer those questions, those kinds of things?
We've got a public record form if, uh...
Okay.
She will deal with them on the phone, or by email, if they needed clarification. Uh, you know, there's, there's certain things we don't do. We, we're not inquire, we're not required to make up a record, like, if somebody wants, "Tell me how you're affecting me and my taxes," or something like that. "Tell me what millage would be better for me." We don't have to create a record.
Right, and there, and there are a number of documents that are not covered under the public records, as you alluded to. I think in the state statute, I mean, it's quite a list. It's not just a couple of things.
Somebody might want a victim, like, if you, a police report, the, uh, victim has to be redacted off of the report.
Correct, but those are enumerated in the, in the state statute.
Right.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the council? All right, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance as presented, raise your hand. All in opposition, it's rejected, it's denied on a two-four vote, be Mr. Shoemaker, Tisdale, McGilvery, and Lawrence in opposition.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Glavine.
I know in other, uh, measures like this, we, we've been allowed to offer an amendment. May I do so?
Well, we've already, already voted on the matter. We should've offered an amendment early, earlier, Mr. Glavine. I wish we could, but, and this has come up before, and I understand, but, um, I think there may be, we have to wait a little while before something like this, it can come up again, but I think there's a, um...
I'll double-check that. On an ordinance, it may not be.
Time. It, I don't know if it's a year, it could be six months, whatever it is, but certainly at that time, if you, if you wanted to come back, take another shot at it with an amendment, Mr. Glavine's input.
I'll look at what the time limit is.
Right, and I don't recall either.
Mr. Glavine, uh...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ray Byd. Thank you, Mr. Glavine. All right, that brings us to item B. If the clerk would read item B, please.
Ordinance to amend the code of ordinances pertaining to Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay. All right, let's see. Ooh, God, who made the motion on that? I'm sorry.
I'm McGilvery.
Gines, McGilvery. All right, Mr. Gines made the motion. Mr. McGilvery seconded that. Mr. Gines?
Okay, yes, uh, Peter, could you give us a little update on that area?
Yeah, we had the, um, I think back in, uh, November, October timeframe, we, we cleaned up the whole ordinance about, uh, deleting parks that didn't exist and adding new parks. Uh, this section fourteen-one-one and fourteen-one-two had been on the books since the mid-eighties, uh, which allowed for a park commission, Park and Recreation Committee, which was an advisory commission. Uh, I don't think it had ever been filled since the mid-eighties. George probably knows the real history of it, but, uh, it was tabled because there was some interest in, in keeping that on the books. So, uh, I went through the language and tried to clean it up if it was gonna be introduced today. Uh, what we did was, instead of nine members, we had seven members, which would be one from each ward, uh, allow for vacancies to be filled by the mayor, much like, uh, the Planning Commission. The language from nineteen eighty-two, we took all that out. The powers and duties, we kept that as, um, that they're an advisory board, but also we had a, um, there's a beautification committee, also in a different area of the code, and my thinking was, since, um, you know, the Parks and Recreation Committee, if there was, as part of their job, if you wanna make things more beautiful, or work on anti-litter, or general betterment of the look of the city, is to give this committee those duties as well, so they could organize anti-litter campaigns, they could, uh, sort of be a liaison between themselves and the parks and the cities about what parks needed attention. So, these are just my, this is my crack at it. Y'all could do a workshop on it later if you want. You could, um, work through it now, however you wanna do it.
Yeah.
Honestly, go ahead, you, you, honestly, you need to have a workshop. They've tried all this before, it didn't work before, having these committees, having a beautification program, you know, 'cause they had to have all these people filling these spots and doing all this stuff. We never could get enough people to do it, or they never stayed with it. They started off and did one, park and cleaned up, and that was it. So, it never, ever worked, as far as doing it now. If you need to set it up a different way, I don't know how you do that. I mean, we have a hard enough time getting stuff done within the city itself, and the city employees, and they have volunteers doing it. It's, it's been rough. And we've tried a beautification program, and I don't think it lasted four or five months, and that was all done with. So, I don't know what you're accomplishing here in a committee for the parks. I don't know what, what are you planning on doing? Are you talking about strictly a beautification program, or a committee that gonna actually say something about the parks themselves?
My, my original proposal was just to strike it all, and then the, the council did not wanna strike it all, and they, there was some interest in keeping the commission alive, so, I'm, I'm working at the request of the council as far as, what would it look back, what would it look like if we sort of put, kept this in place? We still have to clean up the, the language about nine members. You can't have nine members in seven wards.
Yeah, I can see that, but I don't see any purpose in it anyway. I think you'd do better to just shut the whole thing down. I don't know where you're going. We don't need another board telling us what to do. We don't need another board with a lot of people involved that are not gonna show up. Then you gotta fill that board constantly. We have a lot of time with the Planning Commission and everything else. How many people, after a while, they just get tired of that? And if they don't seem like they accomplished anything, you know, we're going through that with the tree committee, and then we try, we go through that, and it's always replacing somebody. "Oh, I don't wanna do it anymore." We, we don't need to waste time on that. We need to take care of the business of the city, and that's what we do up here as a council, take care of the business of the city. I don't think we need any more boards. That's what I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Mr. McGilvery?
I just got a couple of comments. I don't agree with Councilman Lawrence regarding the tree committee. I've attended every meeting since I've been on this council of the tree committee, and, uh, they're, they're doing an outstanding job on what they were delegated to do. I've had numerous phone calls, not just from Ward Four, but many residents in the city that were pro-putting this Park and Recreation Commission back together. Uh, I think it's needed. I think it'll be worked, might have to work some bugs out, but I, I, I think it's a, um, a positive direction to go in. That's my thought.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Anything?
I have nothing yet.
Mr. Shoemaker, anything?
I have nothing.
Uh, just a couple of observations. Personally, I'm in, I'm in favor of both of these, um, commissions, and I appreciate the, the effort, Mr. Ray Byd, and you're, you're trying to listen to our comments and figure out which way we wanna go, and we're, we're expressing a number of different views on that, so I appreciate the challenge. I think the Parks and Recreation Board, you're right, it's gotta be adjusted to, um, seven members, and the way it currently reads, the mayor would appoint those members, and then it would be, they'd be confirmed by the council, and I think it would be an excellent source of, um, input. They'd be, they're just an advisory board, correct? An advisory commission?
Right.
Uh, just as the, uh, tree committee is, and in, in some respects, there's maybe an oversimplification of the Planning Commission in terms of making recommendations to the council. Uh, it's kind of the same situation. So, they, they have really no authority other than to make recommendations, um, to improve the Parks and Recreation facilities that we have. I, I think I would welcome that. I know there's been a lot of concern. We got a lot of, we got a lot of parks, big ones, small ones. We've got a ton of them, uh, and it would be nice if the folks who, who dealt with the sports athletic facilities in the parks, if they had a citizens committee, in my estimation, that would offer suggestions. That way, it's not just, you're not just hearing it from the council, well, the department heads, or whatever. You've got a body out here that studies this thing. Same thing with the Beautification Commission. Uh, the Beautification Commission, I think that would require some work, simply because it's, it can, the way it currently reads, you might end up with thirty-five people on that, that board. Again, I appreciate the challenge here.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. It's a lot, um, and the, and the thought, I'm sure, is to get as much input as possible. So, I'm in favor of having both of these, uh, commissions up and running, and I'm, I'm happy to work with anybody on the council in conjunction, um, with the city attorney and the administration to kind of structure this or update it, and I have no problem making, making the effort to do that. That said, my only other observation was wrapping that up into one commission, phew, that's five, excuse me, that's seven people doing the work for both of those commissions. That's, that's a, that's a responsibility I would hesitate any, to ask anybody out there to sit in an unpaid position, particularly, and do a good job. That would require a lot of time and effort. So, I, I, I mean, my position on this is, I, I can't approve what's before us here. I can't vote in support of that, but I'm happy to, to work towards getting any of these two commissions, getting the ordinances revised, and get them up and functioning. If, uh, if anybody would offer a motion to table this, happy to table it until we can work and maybe come back and present something else to the council, if there's enough support from the council here today to, uh, to table that, and, uh, as I said, I'm happy to facilitate any comments or, or suggestions from the council and work with the administration and the attorney on that.
I'd like to make one statement.
Sure, Mr. Lawrence.
We have a committee. They call councilmen. We elected to take care of these problems. We can't keep putting boards in place to take care of problems. We deal with the people first. It's seven councilmen.
Right.
Right, we take care of our own ward, and everybody else that needs any help. So, we don't need another board telling them that we have to do this here, when we know they got, they're gonna call you. And I call an old committee guy, I'm gonna call a councilman. We elected to do this already, so no, I don't think we need any of this. That's our job.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Tisdale, may I speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shoemaker.
Just a couple of things. I agree, we need to change some, the nine to seven. Um, I'm, I'm for the committees. I would hope anybody that volunteers and is picked for either committee would be passionate about that, which would be an asset to the city, and I understand what Councilman Lawrence is saying, but I can't get anything done in my ward. I need all the help I can get. I wish I could get fifteen committees to do things, because I can get absolutely hardly anything done in my ward. So, if any of these committees have, and I'm fine with tabling it as well, but, uh, I'm all in favor of it, because I think the city, certainly in those beautification, we need help, and we certainly need help in Parks and Rec, and I just think if, again, I'll reiterate, if they're on the board, or the committee, and they volunteered, I would think they would have a passion and a desire to do that, which could only be a benefit. I don't think they're gonna volunteer free and hate beautification or hate Parks and Rec. So, I just think it's a good thing, and that's all I have.
All right, any other comments or questions from the council?
I'll offer a table amendment until we get more information. We can sit down and talk about it, have a workshop. So, I mean, I'd, I'd do that, if you wanna have that way, people that, that thing explained to us, and then you're gonna find out exactly what these people are gonna do. Just 'cause you put the board together, don't mean everything's gonna be wonderful. Even in your ward, David, I mean, you having a problem? That board's not gonna help your problem. It's just your problem that you gotta solve. I, I mean, that's the thing.
I can't get help anywhere else. I can take what I get. If I can get a, a, a commission to help with something, I'm, I'm certainly willing to take it and try.
So, I mean, I just, uh, I don't see how a committee's gonna help you if you got a problem.
Right, so did I...
You gotta handle them. I just tabled, uh, a workshop.
All right, so, Mr. Lawrence says a motion to table... All right, so Mr. Lawrence says a motion to table this matter for a workshop?
I second it.
There's a second by Mr. McGilvery. Any discussion on tabling the matter? There being none, all in favor of the, of tabling this matter for a workshop? It's approved on a six oh vote. Thank you, gentlemen. I'll get with the administration, and we'll work out a time for a workshop in the next several weeks, sometime in the near future, here with all the festivities in March. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item, item C. If the clerk would read that item, please.
Resolution appointing Amber Guest to the Board of Trustees of the Biloxi Public School District.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Uh, Mr. Glavine, is there a second? Second by Mr. McGilvery. All right, Mr. Glavine?
Well, first of all, I want to thank Swayze Collier for her, her service to the school board. What a great leader, a person of a great character, and kind of took, you know, the goals and the successes of the Biloxi school system to new heights. So we certainly want to thank her. Is Amber here tonight?
Amber is here.
Can we hear a little bit from you, Amber? Can we come up here?
Hi, Ms., uh, Ms. Guest, I have a...
Let's let her in first, let her speak.
Come, come on up, sit down, state your name. We'll swear you. No, we're not going to swear you in. And get close to the mic.
Hi, I'm Amber Guest, and appreciate the nomination, very honored, and I look forward to serving. Yeah, so thanks for having me.
She's a proud parent and concerned about, about our schools, and that's the worst thing.
Um, yes, I actually have three kids in two of the schools. Grew up in Biloxi, went to Biloxi, went to Fernwood Junior High School, Biloxi High School. Family has a business here, Lucky's Furniture, just celebrated seventy years in business. So very involved, look forward to, you know, creating visions and setting goals and doing it for the kids.
Thank you for your courage.
Thank you for having us.
Now, let me tell you, you're, you'll be up to the task. I know your family, of course, I've known you for a number of years. You're an outstanding selection.
Well, thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Glavine?
I, I have no additional comments. We'll certainly support y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery.
Councilman Glavine said it all, I just welcome her to the team.
Any questions or comments? I just have one question. This has been bugging me all weekend, has, has nothing to do with the individual, but just with the resolution. So if I understand this correctly, the term is, she is to fill an unexpired term?
No, it's expiring. I think she, uh, Swayze has served her last term, her last, uh...
All right, so the, so the...
She'll be available for the next meeting.
So it says, it says the resolution is to appoint her to fill the unexpired term, which, which began in March seventeenth, twenty twenty, and will end March sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. So that's next month. So my question is, between now and when the term expires, March sixteenth, that's, that's only three or four weeks from now, there's no school board meeting between now and then? Is that a typo?
No, there is a school board.
There's one in March, there's a March meeting.
There's in March, it's generally the third, it's generally the third Tuesday of the month.
Yeah, but there's a special meeting tomorrow for, for, uh...
Ashley.
Okay.
Financial, okay, I'm sorry.
Meeting's tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, good, okay, I didn't, I didn't see that on the school board, on the, on the...
If she does a good job, she'll be reappointed.
I can assure you she's going to do an outstanding job if I was a betting man.
Can I ask a question, Paul?
Sure, Mr. Lawrence.
How come we can't just put her in for, what are the terms, four years? How come we just can't do that today? We don't have to say it's...
Right, I mean, it, it...
I don't know, it's already done, let's just go ahead and reappoint her next month.
All right, reap, so we're reappointing her for a month, and then I, I would assume that we'll see another resolution, appointing her to a regular term?
It's probably a statutory thing of the mayor filling an unexpired term.
Gotcha.
Much like this park committee.
All right, all right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the resolution as presented, it's approved on a six oh vote? Congratulations, or condolences as the case may be. Now, we have a good school board, we have an outstanding school administration, you'll do a terrific job. Okay?
You don't have to come by next month if you don't want.
All right, that brings us to item D. If the clerk would read that resolution, please.
Resolution to grant final subdivision plot approval for the cottages at Howard.
Paul, I'm going to step out of the room, because that's the part of my family.
All right, Mr. Lawrence.
I'll move that, assemble it too.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
The clerk would note that Mr. Lawrence is out of the room. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Guines, and a second by Mr. Glavine. Mr. Guines?
Yeah, he wanted to go ahead and subdivide it. I saw one of the houses already, it is excellent for the neighborhood. It's going to be something great. The whole idea for the east side of Biloxi is repopulation, and this is the start of repopulation, populating an area that has been hard to grow. So I'm all behind it. Dr. Murphy has done a great job with that house. I've been inside and outside of it, couldn't be more happier for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guines, Mr. Glavine.
Have nothing to add.
Any other comments, questions? I have none, all in favor of the resolution as presented, it's approved on a five oh vote, thank you. Do we want to let Mr. Lawrence back in the room?
For code enforcement.
All right, that brings us to the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence, and a second by Mr. Guines. Okey-dokey. Mr. Lawrence, any questions, any items? You have questions?
Just want to comment on E. How much money are we going to want to put in this? We bought this place for two million, we hadn't stopped repairing the sunset. So how much money are we going to spend on spending in this, this old piece of property? That's, that's turning into a lot of money. I mean, here's another eighty-five hundred, with two hundred thousand a couple of months ago. Just someone that seemed like this, we spent too much money to put this much money back into it.
Well, we're avoiding about eight thousand dollars a month rent, so that offsets some of the improvements that we're putting in there. It's, it's loaded to the gills with everything, and there, there's some more improvements that's going to make the value of the facility next to some property that we already have that much stronger. So I, I respectfully disagree with you. It's well-spent money, and it, it's going to be a facility that'll be there for a long time. We're, we're, you know, we're not paying on something we don't own, that we'll own this over the course of time. So it's a, you know, it's an expenditure that we need to do, finish up with some extensions and some improvements to the, to the ground. So I mean, Chief, if you want to add anything else to that, we can, but it's, uh, money well-spent.
They just view this more as a maintenance, a maintenance issue. It's, it needs the paint, it's going to protect the building, and it's going to make it look much better. We're trying to open this up where we can have other cities come in and do training.
Right, I think you are doing some training in the facility that you never had the opportunity, was actually renting a second building in, in addition to the Crawford Street building in order to do this. So it's, it's making a truly a multi-purpose facility.
It, it is.
I know, Rob, and all that, my biggest problem, we spent too much money to start with it. That, that was my biggest problem, we were paid for the piece of property. What you're doing to it is not bad, what you're going to use it for is not bad, not saying any of that. I'm saying we put too much money in this piece of property, thought that you, it's going to take a long time to recruit that kind of money. That's, that's my problem with that. On the knee cases of, on O, was it Walt not here?
Yeah, Walt's in the back.
And we're kind of probably having an hour with knee case.
Good afternoon, council. Yes, change order O is related to the work on Camellia. There was an unknown and unmarked six-inch water main that was going across Camellia to the Edgewater Inn. We didn't have it on our City Works, and Public Works was unaware of it. So it was truly unknown, and the contractor hid it, and it washed out a lot of his work. So he had to clean up his work and make the repair. And we also have another line item within that change order. It's for a sewer main up there at Camellia and Southern.
Now, these problems we have, are they recognized by MEMA and FEMA, where we get the money from? They're willing to pay for this?
Yes, sir, in this case, I've already preset it with MEMA telling that, you never know. I mean, it's never a hundred percent guaranteed, but I did explain it to the MEMA consultant, and they understand that some things in a city this old are going to just be unknown to any parties.
All right.
Even Billy Ray, even as old as Billy Ray is, even sometimes he doesn't know. So, but he knows a lot, but...
Yeah, Billy Ray didn't know there was a main there, that's pretty tough.
Yeah, six inch going to that Edgewater Inn, apparently. We know it now, but not then.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The last one is, uh, on P. Mike, what is this, Gulf Coast Properties Together Pool Association? What are we doing here? P, like in Paul.
I've got, I've got that. This was Frank Bordeaux. There was legislation passed last year to allow...
That's going to cost a lot of money. You bring up Frank Bordeaux's name, that costs us money, the time we talked to him. All right, what, what is it?
We expect it to save money, but...
I hope so.
And it's, uh, for the property insurance. Right now, we put all of our property and try to get bids for insuring that property for wind and damage, firestorm, flood. This is something that this statute now allows multiple cities, counties, utility districts. We can combine all of the property for purposes of getting a quote, where you're submitting all that property to somebody and going out and getting bids. So this is being formed this year. They're looking for Memorial Hospital to get involved as well. If, if that occurs, he's projecting our portion of the reduced premium in the range of two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars, off of our premium, so...
So the Memorial Hospital not sitting inside of anything, they're just a county owned?
They're pooling all the assets that are going to be insured.
Yeah, so we, they, they're going to go in there and prove to us.
Right, it's going to form a pool, I think, Insurance Commissioner Chaney has been, and as far as everything, that's been coordinated with it. But I think overall, the whole pool is going to save in, in order, like, three million dollars, and we, our proportion would be, you know, according to our assets. So, you know, overall, everything, everybody, if, if Memorial is Biloxi, Gulfport, and the county's already in the middle of it. So it's a significant savings, and, and of course, we'll, we'll realize that in, in the reduced premium.
So we can only spend about three million on our property insurance, so it'd be less than that?
Yep.
Roughly, three, three point one, something like that.
Knock off ten percent is what we're looking for, ten percent reduction.
All right, that's, that is a good thing. Hope that works out for us. That's three hundred thousand, that's good. We can put it into the death port building.
Got plans for him.
I second that.
Thank you, that's it. Second floor, second floor.
All right, all right, Mr. Lawrence, hold that thought. Mr. Guines, anything?
Nothing.
Mr. McGilvery, anything? Mr. Glavine, Mr. Shoemaker? On item N, this deals with the seafood museum repair and maintenance cost. And we appropriated twenty-five thousand dollars for repairs this year, I think, for the seafood museum, correct?
Correct.
And have they expended that? Or this is, this is in addition to, I'm assuming, that twenty-five thousand that was appropriated for maintenance and repairs?
Rachel.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. The woman of the hour.
That's it.
Thank you.
You're correct, we budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars this year. Of that, we give fifteen thousand to the museum for the repair and maintenance fund, so that Alvin is able to manage that herself. She submits reports, we get all of that back.
Okay.
This is about, this goes back to our air conditioner. We had a not-to-exceed price of seventy-nine thousand, one hundred. As a part of that not-to-exceed were payments for removing a window so that we could get the, the temporary air conditioner in. Well, I'm running short on contracts, because we paid six thousand something dollars to remove that window. That was a part of that seventy-nine one, but we just, we paid that directly to Dunaway. We've only reimbursed the exact Bruce Hardeman.
So we're looking to move five thousand dollars in the general fund to, to finish that repair, and Ms. Cron...
Well, to allow us to have funds to continue paying like our elevator contract, fire monitor.
Miss Cron David still has fifteen of that set aside. She may have expended some of that, but that's just to manage the day-to-day, the things that come up, so forth.
She's spent, I think she's a little over half, and she's trying to hold on to the rest, knowing that summer and air conditioning is coming.
Thank you, Ms. Quave. Let's see, um, item, item R is the, is one of the additions to the agenda. Recognize additional funds for the Keesler Stadium Capital Maintenance Restricted Fund. Could somebody give me a, Ms. Labata, twenty-five words or less?
So our expenses this year are already approaching our fifty thousand dollars that we budget, so that we're moving some money from, I'm not sure where it comes from exactly, that's really a Diana question. But anyway, so we're moving this, it's associated with the baseball funds, but moving it into the maintenance line, so we can, we have some air conditioners that need to be fixed.
Right, so there's work to be done there in that annual maintenance fund. There's twenty-five thousand from us and twenty-five thousand from the Shucker Organization, and we have repairs coming up that are going to exceed that, so this...
Correct, correct.
Okay, this is our proportion.
Well, and that to the stadium itself, is that seats, what is that?
Um, well, we, we actually have some seat repairs that are in the works now. We have some hot water heaters that are out, and we have, one of the chillers needs some pretty extensive repairs done to it, in, in one of the suites, in the sparklight suite.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Labata. All right, that's all the questions I have. All in, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented? It's approved on a six oh vote? And I'll ask for exceptions, Mr. Lawrence, any exceptions? None. Mr. Guines? Mr. McGilvery? Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
Mr. Shoemaker? And I have none. Thank you, gentlemen. That brings us to the code enforcement hearings. All right, thank you, Mr. Creel. Item A, Blue Water Cove Properties, is anyone here to speak on Blue Water Cove Properties at two seventy-four McDonnell Avenue? And, Mr. Creel, you can proceed with your narrative.
Okay, the property's still in violation.
Okay, so A is still in...
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. A is resolved.
A is resolved, thank you, all right, that brings us...
That's a good start, Jerry.
Item B?
Item B, thank you.
Okay, item B, Robert and Candace Gambrill, twenty-four sixty-two Pass Road. This property's still in violation.
Question, that's where this, a new nail salon is going, I think, is that...
Yes, sir.
Did, did the young lady or, or the organization building that, did they purchase the property?
Yes, sir, they did.
Okay.
Uh, and we've, I mean, we'll bring them to y'all if we don't have any success in contacting them about what can you do, can you resolve it? But in this case, we'll, we'll keep trying to get back with them and see if they can get it cut.
But wouldn't it be the new owner's responsibility?
If they own the property, yes, sir.
Right, so wouldn't we be, and, and I don't know the young lady's name, I, I remember acting on that recently, wouldn't she be responsible for that?
She would be, and basically, it just needs to have the grass cut and some limbs removed, and it would be ready to go.
Right, okay, so I, I don't know what the, I don't know what the procedure is, but, but I would think that we would want to go to the new owner.
We, we do.
Okay, so can, can we consider this matter closed?
Yes, sir.
With Robert and Candace Gambrill?
They obviously have not changed the roles over at the courthouse, and that's the reason that we have to live... that we have to list them on here.
No, I understand that. And sometimes the counties, weeks or months or.
Years.
No telling how many months behind. So I know that's an issue, but, but we know for a fact that the property has a new owner. Could we just deal with that new owner?
We, we will.
Gary, do I need to?
Okay.
Do I just need a motion for a second? Okay.
All right. We'll go ahead and clear this matter then. Everybody on board with that? Good enough. Thank you, Mr. Creel.
Item C, Christine Jeroz, 622 Division Street. This property's still in violation.
Is Christine Jeroz or anyone here available to speak on her behalf for 622 Division Street? Yes, ma'am. Come on, come on up. We're from the government and we're here to help you. Just pull a chair up and if, if you would, you'll need to pull the mic close. And Mr. Creel, what are the violations?
Basically, the grass just needs to be cut.
Okay. It's all yours, Mr. Jeroz. What would you like to tell us?
Um, so I know it's hideous. My grandma had a bit of a problem, but I inherited the house and I actually have a dumpster out front today and as soon as I leave here, I'm going to Home Depot to buy a ride on mower.
Okay. But all, all that needs to do to resolve the, the matter is just to mow the grass?
Yeah. In, in her defense, in her defense, she lives right, she lives right in front of my mother's and I, they've done a phenomenal job. Her and her fiance just came to help her mother out. Her mother has been very, very sick and so they, they're taking on a, a great responsibility. I watched them, uh, go through it and also make drastic improvements to the area. So I'll, I'll just move to give them, uh, at least 60 days to go ahead and do all the things they need to do.
All right. So there's a motion for an additional 60 days, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion? All in favor of a 60-day extension? It's approved on a six oh vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, what was your name again?
Tana Jeroz.
How do you say your last name?
Jeroz.
Jeroz?
Yes.
Okay. J E R O Z. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Creel, next, please. Item D.
Item D, Lewis and Vinoc trend, 180 Oak Street. That case has been resolved. Item E, Trent Q. Din, Thu Mc Wynn, 194 Lily Street. That case has been resolved. Item F, Gaithron, 296 Keller Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item G, Evan Pham Lu, 245 Benaki Avenue. This property's still in violation.
No kidding?
Easy, easy, easy. All right.